Online and that was my next statement. This meeting will be recorded. And so, thank you all for attending in person and this is great. Start off with a centrate the positive. I forgot to check with staff which order you guys wanted to go in. Whoever wants to volunteer first step on up. Thank you. Yes, well, yes, please, because then, yeah. If I have to be recorded, you have to be recorded.
You will get the Madam Chair Watson in board Heather Love, Principal of our elementary. I have several things to share. Excited that we're starting our second round of the family connection. I shared a family session before spring break and we're starting our English teaching families. This Saturday, so we have actually we have eighteen families assigned, which is a lot. Child care and so I think there's like twenty-five kids that we're gonna have to provide childcare for, just to know. Yeah, it's pretty, I'm excited that we got so much interest. So students in talent, Phoenix, in Orchard Hill, and also some from families from D F X two. So that's pretty exciting. Also starting another round of enrichment opportunities after school and next week. Oh, ten-four, good buddy. Uh, thanks Polly. Um, so the robotics class will start next week. We had thirty-two kids sign up for that and we're gonna be able to let everybody into that and that will go for seven weeks this spring, which is a great opportunity. Robotics and Legos, nothing bad about that. Also share that we are having our kindergarten roundup on April twentieth. So a big shout out to Cheryl, Wendy and Diane. Office managers are working really hard to get that all lined up and organized um, so that we can welcome our kinders in for next year. Also, we had a great coffee with the principal session yesterday over at Sweet Feet. Rebecca was there and it was just really fun, just good conversations around new ideas about family engagement and DEI work. So, and then lastly, I wanted to share that we are really stoked about field trips. I don't know about the other elementaries, but like it's happening like every day I'm signing more permission forms to, yep, go for it, do it. So that's exciting. Um, we do have a pretty special opportunity for our second and third graders to get swim lessons, which will start this month. So, all good stuff at T E S. Yes, it's just hidden. We're gonna reveal it. That's the great reveal.
Good evening, Board. Chairwoman Watson, Kurt Chang, Principal at Orchard Hill Elementary School. I feel like I'm really close to you guys tonight. This is interesting. Okay, a couple of things just I want to mention tonight. Uh, one is like to thank the Rogue Power Pack Program and everybody who's involved in that for the continued service that they provide our families. Some of the media's talents we provide every week. And we've just had multiple comments from families and how much they appreciate that. So I want to mention those that group tonight and appreciation. I'd like to give a shout out to Tiffany Lambert, Erica Cazarrati and Mary Martina for their collaboration work this afternoon. We kinda, we had to deal with kind of an unusual and challenging placement for an incoming student coming into us. And the meeting was just so collaborative and positive. And when we got done, the parent was saying, you guys are the best team I've ever worked with. And so it was really, it was a positive, positive experience. And it took us all because we really didn't know what the placement would be, but we got a good plan in place and it was just really fun to be a part of that. So, I want to give a shout out to that team. Um, and then last note I want to share is a little recognition to Melanie Kibikowski. She's one of our fifth grade teachers. On behalf of O E S, she applied for a grant from the Trailblazer Foundation. And she received it or we received it. So, uh, we received ten thousand dollars from the Blazer Foundation and we've got a multitude of things that we're gonna use for, but as Heather said, it's ten thousand dollars worth of fun for O E S. So we're looking forward to that and I want to thank her for her efforts to put that together. So. And then Heather shared a bunch of other things I could have shared, but I'm gonna keep it a little shorter. So that's it from Orchard Hill. Thank you, Board. Appreciate it.
Evening Board, Aaron Santi, Administrator of Mega Programs. It's like theater in the round. Reminds me of my Shakespeare days.
Are you, you're Aaron? I didn't recognize you without your mask.
I was gonna wear it tonight too. So, just a few things. First, from Phoenix Talent Rising Academy, we've got all of our kids K through five going on two separate trips over the next couple of weeks to Orange to Todd Wood for a field trip. If you guys haven't been out there, it's a pretty cool experience. So, um, just on the south end of Ashland. So we're looking forward to our students heading down there. And then also wanted to let you guys know, just in the testing capacity, our ALPA testing is just wrapping up as a district and in the state, actually. And we're just getting started with smarter bounce testing. We've started out here at the high school and we're gonna continue in the middle and elementary schools here over the next few weeks. So, we're looking forward to our students showing what they know. Uh, and then I need to, or I would like to present on Shawna's behalf, she's not here tonight, but for Phoenix Elementary, she wanted me to share that Christie Dixon, the media manager over there, put on a book fair this last week and they raised over three thousand dollars, which is very cool. And I know Christie was working her tail off last week. So she did a great job. She also wanted to thank Zoe Boyle's fourth graders for stepping in and providing the morning announcements at Phoenix Elementary. And so that's kind of fun to listen to the kids share those announcements with the whole school. And finally, second graders across the building are all involved in research projects, just wrapping them up mostly around animals. And so I got to see actually some second graders presenting to a first grade class on some animal research. So it's pretty fun to watch kids share with each other. So that's it from Phoenix Elementary. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, Kent Valier, Principal at Talent Middle School. And I was just kind of reflecting over there for a second. I think this might be the first board meeting that administrators have been at where we didn't have to have masks. And I think there was some discussion at one of the last board meetings about what our schools were doing to kind of do that transition with kids. So obviously all the schools did some activities to, uh, help our kids adjust to that. And I'm really proud of our Bulldogs. Uh, some kids are still wearing masks. But there has really been not one incident of, you know, kids bothering each other or, you know, making fun of each other about masks. So I am really proud of our kids for doing that. And I wanted to thank them for signing up for that. Also, I really want to thank some people from Phoenix High School. Earlier this week, uh, the Link Crew headed by Carolina Campbell, Tammy Ingerson, Michelle House and Helica Mendoza, Celine Paramon, Ben Evans and Cody Lindsay. They all came over to start the process of making eighth graders, ninth graders and Pirates. And, uh, when I was here at Phoenix High School, you know, I participated in that prior to Link Crew. And the, the work that those adults have done with the leadership kids here is fantastic. Our kids ate it up and it was just a credit to Phoenix High School and I wanted to thank them publicly. Also, I wanted to brag a little bit more. You guys might be tired of hearing me talk about your investment in band. This week, our band kids came over to Phoenix High School and I want to thank to Mike DeRose, Brett Eason and Jamie Dipburner. They're all kind of the band department. The, uh, I didn't really know what a euphonium ensemble was, but I know now, all kinds of sizes of tubas essentially. And, uh, the ensemble came from University of Oregon and played for all the kids. Not only was the music beautiful, but they spoke to the high school kids about college and just got them, uh, very excited about music, both formally as a major and informally, if you're majoring in something else, you know, you can still play in the bands and stuff. So it was fabulous. So I again, uh, thank you for your support of that and a lot of kids are really getting good for band. Thank you.
And we never get tired of hearing about band. I'm saying that for Sarah as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson, Board, Randy Wade, Assistant Principal of Phoenix High School. I'm filling in for Dave because Dave is at a baseball game tonight, but he wanted me to share some things about sports and activities. Uh, so Unified Sports are back. Uh, they're playing soccer this spring. Unified Sports combined students, obviously with our special ed along with general ed students. Christie Sanders and Yaneth Garcia are coaching the team. They're gonna play five nights, um, against various schools. And actually will host at P T Rising Field on April twenty-sixth and May tenth. Uh, the stadium and P T Rising Field are being used daily and nightly. Soccer, play football, track and field, high school and middle school. And the Southern Oregon Pow Wow are just a few of the events taking place. Uh, we're gonna host a large invitational track meet on April twenty-second and twenty-third. Uh, spring sports obviously are up and running. A hundred and fifty students are taking part, plus eighty more in the track and field program at the middle school. So he wanted to thank all the dedicated coaches for their time. Uh, we've started planning the first annual P T S D Elementary Track and Field Championships. Uh, this special event will be held on June fourteenth and include fourth and fifth graders from all three of our elementary schools. So that'll be a fun event. And finally, like Orchard Hill, um, P H S also received a grant from the Trailblazers Foundation for ten thousand dollars for community building events. After loss, obviously due to the twenty twenty-five. So that's today.
Good evening, Board. Chair Watson, rest of the board. Great to see you guys. Great to see faces. Sarah, you talked about, if you, as you pull into the parking lot, that deep swallow there. We have not got enough rain this year, but really we're hoping to see what that turns into. It's gotta be just as warm as Daniel Meyer outside. So, uh, hold out hope. Keep hanging on to that. Some announcements for you guys tonight. Kelly Johnson, an English teacher for us, is presenting at a national conference and I've got to read it because I mess it up. National Council of Teachers of English, um, with other professionals from around the region. Kelly presented at a regional conference about how to make A P courses and advanced level courses more accessible to all students and especially underrepresented populations. Uh, they saw, they saw her presentation and said, you gotta bring that nationwide. So P H S is gonna be represented nationwide early next fall. So kudos to her. Great feather in her cap and also great recognition for the work we're doing at the Pirate Ship. Uh, speaking of the Pirate Ship, Neil Carvallo, another shout out for him and Decca. Um, our kiddos are leaving in two weeks going to Nationals in Georgia. That's one I was hoping to chaperone, just couldn't squeeze it into the schedule. But Zion Schulbain, Courtney House, Ava Robinson, Mikaila Potts and David Ariano will be representing the Pirates in Georgia. So looking forward to that. Representing the Pirates this weekend, Madeline Mayer. Uh, we've all heard it, but it goes, uh, it needs to be celebrated again. Pear Blossom Queen, um, well deserved, well earned. Looking forward to her, uh, wearing that much deserved crown as she's cruising through the Pear Blossom Parade this weekend. First time, I think, in two years that we've had a. Yeah, I don't remember a virtual parade, but, uh, excited for her and excited for us as well. Maybe not as exciting as a parade or a swimming pool. Um, the accreditation process, I've spoke about it several times at the board meetings. We did get our results back. Um, and we are pleased to receive glowing, uh, numbers and reviews in many areas. Um, and we did rank twenty points higher than the national average for every high school. It may not seem like a lot, twenty points, but when overall, uh, the scale they use, twenty points is a huge, huge margin of how we perform. Definitely still some areas we're working to improve, which is great to see those. But getting a third party to come in who's not biased. We're biased. We love what we do, but they get to come in and see what we do and judge us and show us where we need to grow and also highlight the points we're doing great at. So that was, those were great results to see and looking forward to implementing some of those. Uh, last but not least, some upcoming events. April fourteenth, we talked about transition activities. Eighth grade, uh, parent night is April fourteenth. Looking forward to meeting the parents. We've met some of the students. Now we want to meet the parents and start to build those connections. Pirate Care Day is April sixteenth. That's next Saturday. It's gonna be a busy day. It's gonna become an annual event for us. We're gonna meet here at seven-thirty-ish. Some of the students said, really? Seven-thirty, Mr. Walker? We may push it to eight. We'll see where we're at, but we'll have coffee, uh, danishes and we'll rally the troops and go out. So far, we have about forty people signed up. We have seven different sites, um, residential sites to work at. So there's some work to be done. We're still looking for more if you know anybody out there. And last but not least, it is the senior push time. Um, senior dates have come out. April sixteenth, um, or excuse me, April thirteenth, Jostens comes, which is next week. Once Jostens comes and delivers the caps, the gowns, the buzz starts to happen. Kids are going, this is real. Graduation is coming. The parents are going, this is real. Graduation's coming. So. Uh, lots of fun events and I'm looking forward to future board meetings where I share the scholarships our kids have earned and the awards that they're gonna earn as they move off the Pirate Ship into the next phase of their lives. Thanks so much.
Anyone else? I don't see Amy online. I have something, um, right. But Tiffany Lambert, she doesn't know I'm going to recognize her, got, um, accepted into a dock room program, fully paid. Um, I think I've been told only like two in the state got accepted into this program. Fifteen in the state, okay. Two in Southern Oregon. So I want to congratulate her, um, on doing, on getting accepted and, um, taking on another challenge on top of what you have. And I think that's great and it speaks well to our district and congratulations. It was well deserved. I was, I knew about it and I was cheering from silently afar.
Yeah, I'll just add, I had it in my superintendent report as well and, and no, that's great. I'm glad you brought it up now. But Tiffany asked me, uh, if I'd support this endeavor and of course, um, I would. She had an amazing, um, application and I pretty think, I think it was a no-brainer to us, uh, but I'm glad that committee, um, recognized that as well. Look forward to her working on her project, um, and dissertation and, um, supporting her in that. So congratulations.
Sorry Tiffany for surprising you with that. Sorry, but not sorry. Um, hearing nothing else, we will.
Um, Don. It's kind of hard to see me since I'm via Zoom. Um, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to, um, the Communication Department for sharing some information to support students who are practicing Ramadan. I think that that's really like at the heart of what we want to do, right? We want to honor people's differences and find ways to be supportive. So, great job to the Communication Department and then also, um, to Carrie who is leading the E D I Committee for the Phoenix Talent School District for just being willing to, to open space for, um, challenging but also rich conversations. So we can just continue to grow and learn in the space of equity, diversity and inclusion.
Thank you Nancy. And I will try to keep an eye on you. I apologize.
Heather kind of already mentioned it, but I went to the coffee with the principal that happened yesterday morning and it was really nice. There was a lot of parent engagement and ideas and there was just, just a lovely little setting to, meet other parents and get to talk to the principal about our wants and needs. Really nice.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we will move on to, uh, to the representative report.
I can go first. Okay, I have a couple of things. Um, I'm part of the Brain Bowl team. I'm pretty sure I've mentioned that before. Um, we had our competition at SOU and our varsity team ranked second. So we will be on May first going to, um, the televised finals for that. Then, kind of like what, uh, the principal said is lots of seniors, including me, are very ready to graduate and getting a little anty, but we're pushing through and, um, finishing up our final papers and. Um, one final thing, I wanted to give a big thanks to, uh, Celia Rivera Neely from the Future Planning Center. She just switched jobs, but she was a big help to me and lots of other seniors, um, and even juniors looking at colleges and scholarship applications. And she really helped me figure out what I needed to do.
Thank you.
Hello, so our quarter three just ended today. Um, and I know everybody worked really hard, but I know this one was probably the hardest quarter we've had, especially since spring break is only two weeks before the end of the quarter. So it's almost like a cliff we're jumping off of and then we have to get back on and then back into the groove of things. But I think everybody finished out really hard and did really well. Um, the, there's lots of anticipation for next year. Um, Link Crew and Leadership are both sending out applications for the programs and accepting ones this coming weeks and the following. Um, also, fall sports are getting ready already with summer training and summer games. So I think all the athletes are really excited for that and there's just lots of anticipation for next year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you both. Next up is Kristen's comment. I'm trying, I'm trying. Each person is allowed a three minutes to speak with thirty minutes time limit for all testimony. During Kristen's comments, the board's role is to listen. Board, the, the board cannot hear complaints directed toward an employee in public, including complaints in which the employee is not named clearly identifiable and con. Complaint should be presented to the employee's immediate supervisor in person or in writing in ordinance with school board policy K L. If you are joining us virtually and wish to provide public comment, please utilize the raise your hand feature or the chat feature. If you are in person, you have signed up already when entering, I believe. Please, when I call your name, please step up to the mic. If you are virtual, please unmute yourself, turn your camera on if possible and speak clearly. We are limiting virtual comments to parents, students and community members in Phoenix Talent Schools' boundaries. For the record, please state your name and the organization you are with, if any. If you've written, if you've submitted written comments, please summarize that instead of reading word for word. Please be respectful and limit your time for three minutes. And as a reminder, you may also submit written comments by completing the public comment form located on our website under School Board tab. I will start by calling names from those that have already previously signed up in person and then move to joining virtually. I believe I, no one has signed up in person. So we will see if anyone online. I don't, I'll give a second just in case. And I don't. Okay, so I have to look at public comments very slowly, just to make sure. Okay. We are moving on to Superintendent Report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair Watson. And, um, it's been a while since we met, but it's just so great to hear from staff, students, just all the amazing things. I just want to, uh, share my gratitude for all the hard work that's been going on. Not only just this year, last year, but, uh, it's, it's, it's been a challenge, but there are so many things that are going good in the district and you hear it every time here. So thank you to this team. Thank you for the teaching and the support staff. It's just nice to come here and just, uh, really kind of get, uh, a sense of what's going on. Uh, some other good things, Battalion Chief, uh, Brian Bolstad approached me a couple of years ago, um, with a, um, product called Stop the Bleed. And it's, uh, something that is for schools, uh, that, um, as a safety measure in case some tragic event, earthquake, um, school shooting, uh, anything that might have to happen that, uh, is on a school. The Stop the Bleed kits are in each, uh, classroom that are available to help personnel or emerg, uh, staff personnel at the school or emergency personnel, uh, to come in and they will be easily identified to help utilize that. Their, uh, members at the Fire District Five put in their own money to purchase these kits for Phoenix High School classrooms. So I want to mention that they have a training coming up, I believe, here in the next couple of weeks, uh, to share that. And we're hoping to do that across our districts. So I want to recognize our tremendous partnership with the Fire Department and especially Battalion Chief Brian Bolstad. This weekend, you may have seen, um, I want to also commend our Communication Department. Joseph Al is just amazing in, uh, communicating all things Phoenix Talent, uh, highlighting programs, highlighting next steps. We have a tree planting event at Talent Elementary and Talent Middle School, sixty trees, I believe. Should be a nice day out there and we're partnering with the Urban Tree Renewal, uh, Project out of Talent. And it sounds like that will be a well-attended event and I look forward to seeing you there if you can make it that day on Saturday at ten AM. Budget one oh one, we've talked about that a little bit for our community. Um, this, this budget coming up is a very challenging one. Um, and I'd like to share, we do have a date, but I'm, I'm asking permission to do some slides and post it on our budget page for now because we have, uh, a really challenging, uh, well, it's not challenging, but it's just a lot of budget to put together from now until May tenth. And so we have ideas of a six or seven slide budget one oh one that the community can review prior to that, uh, budget committee meeting, uh, on May tenth. And so I'm hoping that will be okay for the board and then we will do something, um, more in person when there's, when the time allows. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know. First Student Weekly Report is in your blue folder. They are getting more employees. We were eleven routes down for many months to start the year and now we're only four routes down. So that has, um, and in my office, no news is good news on bus, um, topics. And I haven't heard much from busing. So, um, and I know our staff do a tremendous job out there for our kids. We still are transporting kids from all over the valley to our schools, um, and taking them home and we will continue to be committed to that. The Culver Road property U G B, we heard today, um, that we do have a date to start that process. Um, so I'll just share with you and Denise can share this as well. Uh, interested parties, uh, meeting will be, a stakeholders meeting will be April twenty-first, um, which is coming up. And then a conceptional planning open house will be April twenty-eighth, the week after that. And then tentatively, that will go to the Planning Commission City Council in May. So we are, seems to be, um, close to the finish line on, on that piece of property, which will allow us to start, moving on the things we want to do on that. So that's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Brett?
Publicizing the budget one oh one on, so we'll get that out.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that out. That whole department is on it. But no, we will get that ready to go. And I know that's important to our community and to our board and we'll get that, um, set up and make sure we have all our families and community understand that. Thank you.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay, on to the consent agenda, which is approval of tonight's agenda, approval of minutes from three, three, three twenty-two and the personnel report that was in our blue folders.
I'll move, uh, approval of the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Michael. Any discussion? Okay, I will say the consent agenda is approved. Um, moving to action items. The first action item is, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar.
Yeah, we reviewed this last time and there are, um, it, it's similar, but we've added some extra time at the beginning of the year for professional development per staff. I do believe, um, it has, there has been some, a little bit of disagreement on the October, uh, in-service day, statewide in-service day. Right now, we reflect it as October seventh. So, uh, many districts in the county, except for Ashland. So many districts in the county, except for Ashland at this time, are recognizing that on October fourteenth. I think it would be in the best interest since most all districts in the county are recognizing it that day that we do that. We do have staff members that have kids in other districts and as well. So I think this calendar is ready to adopt, but I would recommend making that change the fourteenth. And what happens on that day, statewide in-service day used to be pretty comprehensive with a lot of trainings throughout the state and different regions. That simply doesn't happen anymore. It, it didn't happen prior to COVID for the several years and definitely during the COVID years, it's hasn't happened as well. So we use this day to professionally develop our own staff and have programming for and trainings for them on that day. And it's been a valuable day for us over the years.
So are you asking us to adopt it with the change to move that?
That's, that's what I would recommend. Can I imagine if it doesn't do it tonight, we will, we will find out from other districts that they're going to move their date to the fourteenth as well if they're on the seventh. So as is moving the seventh in-service date a week later to match other districts to the fourteenth. And I'll entertain any other questions.
Last year, we ratified the conference dates and so that is reflected on this calendar and that worked well to have seniors more in the fall, right?
Yeah, this, this, uh, this actually adjusts the conference days. We will have fall conferences. We do not have a spring conference on this calendar. We have to, this year, for example, I think it was the fifteenth of April, we only had a one day conference and it, we had mixed reviews on that. We feel like we can target and connect with our families in a different manner than having actually a scheduled conference day. And with our additional non-student contact days to start the year, we, we needed the instructional hours. And so that was, that was a day that wasn't as productive as we hoped when we put it there. So, good question though.
So all conferences for the year are in November, right before the
Yes, yes.
Move approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic calendar as presented, with the exception of moving the in-service date from October seventh to October fourteen.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Rebecca. We will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the approval of the academic council. Next up is the budget committee application. I see that we have one applicant here and I don't see the other one online. So just to start off on the process that we can change it, how I thought it would be as we can. And if you want to, you would like, and then after, and if I was to function for the person that you like. Can I get a second? If there was a second and we vote on it, if that does not pass. Other function, we would vote on, get a second and vote on it. Hopefully, we would have an applicant. If something happened where there was, I don't know, there wouldn't be a tie, then we would go from there, but that's the process that situation. So if you have any questions, you can always start.
And for clarity, I think it's important to note, this is for essentially through the end of this school year, right? So this is an appointment for basically this budget.
Yes, which would be one to two meetings depending on when the person could reapply. That would be a longer opening.
For years.
Yes.
Okay.
If we would like. Is that fine with you?
Be great. Could you come up to the mic? Sorry to just for people at home. Thank you.
Oh, no, please do, yeah.
So I'm Elle Powell and I have a kid at Orchard Hill and then I have another one here at Talon Middle. Um, you know, honestly, I don't really recall. I want to say what happened was I read all of the emails when I get them or the text messages and I was just kind of perusing on the website and I saw that there was an opening and I have a degree in economics and I sit on the site planning architectural commission in the city of Medford. I've, I'm a previous central point planning commissioner as well and I sit on multiple boards and I'm a Realtor and I sit on multiple boards here locally and statewide. So I just, I've always been involved. So that's just kind of how it happened.
Just, what does serving on the budget committee mean to you and what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, um, I really would just like to help kind of oversee and allocate funds in the short term and the long term. Just budgetary process, see where things are going and how they're spent and possibly give ideas that might not be there or look for right now, or like grants and scholarships for students and earners.
I noticed your, your resume and it's very impressive.
Thank you. I work hard at it.
Where did, what's your schooling background? Where'd you go to high school? Where'd you go to college?
I'm actually from Crescent City. My dad's a teacher and he was a principal as well. So I'm from Crescent City. I lived all over California. I've been through multiple colleges, won't lie. I have multiple degrees, but my last college was University of Redlands. It's a private school in Southern California. And when I graduated college, I went through college with two little kids and I had a firefighter and we were offered a free house here. So we came and I just instantly got involved. My parents bribed me to get it. But we love it.
How, how long have you been in Southern Oregon?
About nine years.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
I did not. It was a little bit hard to hear what you were sharing, but I think I got the gist of it and I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
So the other, we do have another applicant, which is Craig Pruitt and his application within our package that we can bring.
Well, I I, and I'd like to speak on behalf of Richard Pruitt, if I may. I'm very impressed with Elle's resume and so forth, but for me, this has been somewhat of a no-brainer in that I know Craig Pruitt. He's, uh, God, he's been on the district board. He served for about twenty-nine years. He served as chairman. He's been Oregon School Board Association president and board member. So he's just got credentials galore and I just feel responsible to, to recommend and I'll make a motion to that effect that we appoint Craig Pruitt as to that position. It's just to me, it's just, it's a no-brainer. He's got the talent. That's a motion, yes.
Do I have any other special questions?
I just want to make sure Senator Golden just arrived. Did he want to apply? Welcome, by the way. Thanks for coming.
No, no, you're fine. No, no, you're fine. You're fine. Um. It's just awkward silence. Um, any, anyone else want to discuss any, anything? I know this is, I mean, I know that both applicants are very good and they have their
It's hard, it's, I wish Craig were here. I wish he could have made it because I, I definitely had some questions that I would like to ask. Yeah, gather some closure on the like that. So I guess my question is around timing and when we need to appoint someone because it's just too bad that we couldn't interview both of our applicants. So if we need to appoint someone today, then that tells me what I need to know, otherwise. When's, when's the first budget committee meeting? First budget committee meeting is in May, correct?
And we do have one more meeting. It's an afternoon. So I'm, what? Whoa, morning. After ten o'clock is after noon to me, but I'm sorry, morning meeting. We have a morning meeting. So I don't know. My only concern is um, I think Mr. Pruitt is tired now, so he might be able to come, but Elle might not be able to and I just want to make sure, we're thinking of all of that. I mean, we, she did great at answering her questions. You know, I know when I personally was or bored. Yeah, it was nice, you know, it was nice to have those. Sometimes questions go and want to
Decisions are made by people who show up and so I feel like there was an opportunity to besides the application, show up or so I think we should move forward and not draw this out and so I'll nominate Elle Powell for to fill the vacancy for this budget committee.
Nancy, were you saying something? I'm sorry.
No, I was not.
All right. The, it's great to have options in virtual, but sometimes it can be a little clunky. So we're working through it. Do I, Sarah had nominated Elle Powell for budget committee. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second it.
Okay.
Let's vote.
Okay, so any discussion before I take this to a vote? Hearing done, I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Oh.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you Ellie, or Elle for applying and we look forward to having you on the budget committee.
Just with that, Denise will get your information and, and get ahold of you and let you know the times and the dates and all those things. So be looking forward to connecting with Denise.
Thank you. Next up is me, adult meal price, price revision. Brent?
Yeah, this was, we set the meal prices before they actually set the, well, we set them as our district before we found out the actual price. And so this is just a simple adjustment for the adult meal prices. We have very few that purchase meals, but this is, so ask, ask asked us to bring this to the board.
May I make a motion that maybe will be seconded this time?
Sure.
May I move the board approve the adult meal price revision as presented?
I'll second.
I second.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so Rick, Rebecca seconded for the meal prices. Do we have any discussion before taking a vote? I hear none. I'm going to start on this side. Rebecca?
Yes.
Rick?
Definitely.
Michael?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the meal price revision is I apologize, Nancy. I did not call you for the last vote.
It could be for the record, it would be, yeah, if she wants to put, place her vote for the record.
Yes, would you like to place your vote for the record? I am so sorry, Nancy.
That's okay. I was like, oh, maybe I don't get to vote today. In this matter, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And I see that when I'm looking online that I will try to speak closer to the microphone.
Thank you so much. I know that's hard as you're trying to make eye contact with people, but on this end, it, we totally lose the sound when you're speaking. Thank you, Don.
I will work on it. I apologize. Um, next is the program report, but we're waiting for
Yeah, Representative Marsh said she would be here about seven, so if we can, it would be nice to move down in the agenda and then move to that, then we can take a break. She's showing up right now.
Well, she's going to be here in a minute. We can wait. Okay, there we go. Perfect. Welcome.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing, actually. We are just in, um, this part, we were waiting. So Brent, would you like to start with us?
Yeah, we have asked Senator Golden and Representative Marsh to join us tonight to share our, our thanks for everything you have done in particular to Phoenix Talent Schools, but we know you work very hard for this community. You've been on the front lines for so many years and in particular after September eighth, twenty twenty. We appreciate everything you've done in legislative body. I know we had a session last time that you helped dedicate millions and millions of dollars to this region for recovery and rebuild. And though our particular one didn't pass the finish line, we trusted and knew that that was going to happen this time. I will tell you, I got a text from our COSOB representative who works with the legislature that morning. And he said, do you have time to chat? And I said, sure. And we were at the same conference and I was walking out in the lobby and then Pam Marsh was calling me as well. And I'm just thinking, what in the world's going on? But we, we got through that and this year we passed a, the legislature passed a House bill to give ADM security, which is a huge boost for this school district. So for that, I'd love to give them a round of applause. I would like to take this time for the board to kind of share their, any thoughts and appreciation and anybody else can share as well. And then we'd love to present you with a gift.
I always like to go first. And in the hearing room, I was really, I was listening.
And in the hearing room, I was really, um, I was listening, um, Representative Marsh to your town hall after the legislative session. And um, when you mentioned that during the short session, um, you're only allowed to bring two bills to the floor, um, for the short session. And one of them was um, the ADM protection and security for our district. So, um, I just really want to again say thank you, especially with so many, um, other, um, worthy, uh, things that, that need to happen that, um, with just a limited amount that, that you chose to follow through with that and, and really set us up for success for the next few years in our funding. So, thank you.
I just want to thank you. And I, I think back to, I think it was September 9th, Representative Marsh. I was at Orchard Hill and we were, had our sort of community thing happening there and we were giving out donations and the district office had their headquarters moved there and everything. And I, I remember walking outside and calling you and saying, we're going to need help. And this was literally, I think the day after, and you said, we're already working on it. So, um, I just appreciate all your, both of your efforts and, um, to secure a unanimous vote in both houses. I don't think I've ever seen that in my 19 years in Oregon. Um, and that just goes to show you, um, how well you did at, um, telling our story, um, with your colleagues. And I really, really appreciate it. So thank you for all the efforts.
I just want to say that I am excited about the ADM, but I'm most excited about how you both showed up for our underserved populations in our community and how um, they have been impacted by this and still are impacted by this and how you keep both showing up for them. And I am truly grateful for that. I appreciate that as a lifelong resident of talent. I'm so appreciative of that.
For sure. I can thank you for this, for the, what you've done for education. But I can also thank you for all that you've done for our community, our big community, yeah, over the years. Uh, I've worked with Pam before. I've worked with, with Jeff or I've was involved with Jeff. But anyway, I appreciate both of you and I'm so grateful you are up in Salem. Please stay there. Thank you.
Nancy, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Thank you so much, Don. I just wanted to extend my gratitude and underscore really what everybody else has said. But this, this is so meaningful and it's, um, and I'm especially grateful for people that just continue to put the community first, right? There's a lot of things that are important and there's a lot of challenges and there's a lot of things that being, a lot of things that need to be balanced, but just ensuring that families are taken care of, especially after such, you know, pandemic and fires and everything else. So I'm, I'm just really grateful and I feel really blessed that you get to represent Seminarian.
Well said. I think everyone said everything's so great and we appreciate you. I mean, I've seen you out on public helping the opening of, um, the town RV park and seeing all the work that you've done. I've listened to both your town halls and you spoke passionately about helping our community. And it is no doubt like one of your main priorities and we appreciate it so, so much. It means so much to our district and our families. Um, that you're working and continuing on working on helping, um, the challenges that we face.
Well said. So if you both can stand up here in the middle.
Yes. Yes, please.
How moving it is to come and get your gratitude like this. And I want to say two things. I, um, I am positive that a very large reason and maybe a determining reason that we were successful with this has been the work of the community generally, the Phoenix talent community generally, but of this district specifically. And what this district organized to do very quickly after the fire, the extra tasks you brought on, I think made our job a lot easier as we described what was happening here. I think there was a lot of, uh, understanding and sympathy going in because our, our, this disaster was just so ferocious among our colleagues. But when they heard stories about what this district was doing, what it was giving, what it was deploying, and especially this school district, it really, uh, lightened the load on us as we lobbied. So I really think, uh, the wonderful president we're about to get, uh, belongs to you as well. And I just have one other point. You know, as you probably know, uh, we had agreement in the 2021 session that this ADM relief would happen. And nobody objected. Everybody understood. It was sort of, it was a pretty straightforward case. And it didn't in 2021. And I, to this date, I can't tell you why. Sometimes things disappear for particular reasons that we don't know about, but I still don't know about this. But when Rep Marsh and I found that out at the very end of the 21 session, we both said, well, the first thing we've got to do in 2022, since we already have agreement, is come back and fix that. But what Rep Marsh did, and I said, oh yeah, that's put that on the list. What Rep Marsh did was say, well, that's going to be the first of the two bills that I got. So I, it's really a good example of how she follows through and makes sure things happen. And I, she had all my support, but it was her bill and, and she, uh, she made sure we got that unanimous vote. So I'm just very grateful to you. Just as someone who lives in this community, but as somebody who gives, gives so much power and, um, such a compelling element to the case we tried to make in Salem when we, when we, uh, went there to get, uh, relief from the fire. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
And I'd like to do a little brief back at you too, after those kind words. I still remember that sinking feeling in my stomach when we talked on the last day of the 2021 session and that money was not in the end of session bill. And we immediately reached out to leadership and said, oh my God. And they said, just a mistake. Fell off the table, down in ways and means, we will totally support you in coming back. So we held them to that. And there was simply no question that we were going to come back with this. And, and the reason it was so easy to pitch and, and Jeff talked about that a little bit is because what you've done all of this time. You know, I was out at the expo in the few days after, um, the disaster. And it wasn't but a couple of days where I saw the Phoenix talent school district set up in the back of the expo. And I walked back there and I saw the things that were present and the staff that was present just to reach out and try and find the families, um, who were at the expo or who were coming to the expo to get support, to get supplies, to, to just get a lifeline there at the expo. And that was just the beginning. I mean, you stepped up for students and families in unbelievable ways over the last 18 months. Started at the expo, you started calling and tracking families and children in a way that nobody else could do in a community, which has been one of the hu- huge challenges, just finding out where people were. But you had that established trust with your family so that it's been a, it was important to you to know where the families was. It was really important to our fire um, efforts to have you with those relationships, helping us to figure out where people had gone and what they actually needed. And then you started raising money. I don't know how much money you got to, but it was a lot of money. And it all went out to families and kids. You've run bus routes amazingly. And you did all of this in the middle of pandemic pressures, um, and the, the pressure to provide school in a different way and then to come back and to come back under limited conditions. And to know that there are families out there that are, um, still to this day, living in hotels, living in RVs, living in FEMA housing. We have a whole, I, I am very happy we passed this bill and the legis, you know, you don't get a $60 vote unless everybody's there and everybody votes. And that's really cool. And we still have a whole lot more work to do in rebuilding the community. And I think the last message I would add is that Jeff and I and many others are totally committed to making sure that every family that wants to come back to this community has a chance to come back and has a chance to come back in good housing and housing of their choice. Because really this job is not, you're missing 350 kids. It's great to have money to fill that gap. But what will be way better is when we actually have those children in their chairs in classrooms across the community. And that means really rebuilding to the effort that we need to. So extraordinary thanks to all of you. Thank you for having us. This is so kind.
Thank you.
This was part of our, um, some of the high school program and some summer work. You've seen the sculptures. We have the, uh, plaque on there. And, um, so it's, it's, um, yeah, pretty exciting. So, um, thank you so much. Um, I think, go ahead. So just another round of applause for amazing people.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to take a quick recess so we, um, can chat with you a little bit more, um, like 10 minutes and, um, we'll be back. Yeah. It's nice to be able to chat in person and thank the representative and the senator. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Getting back into business, I feel like I need to hold this. Facilities and bond update. John, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Good evening, Madam Chair and the board. Good to see you here tonight. Just real quick, I thought I would give you a quick update to spring break. Oh, and also I did email you all a facilities newsletter. Hopefully you got a chance to take a look at it. So for spring break, we had a very productive time. We built a new IT area in the warehouse with heating and cooling. It's something that they've needed for quite a while. So we were able to actually start that and finish it, add the heating, cooling and everything over spring break. We put in some new speed bumps in the student parking lot at PHS, which seems to have slowed the traffic down quite a bit. We did a new HVAC unit on the cafeteria at Talent Elementary. And we finished, actually today, we finished the last of it, an LED lighting upgrade to TMS to add light in the common areas. From day one, when I got here, I met with Aaron when he was principal there and he expressed how dark it was there. And but trying to find a good solution has been difficult. And when Kent took over, Kent Lee, so we had the same meeting and I was able to come up with a good solution. I think if you get the opportunity or when you get the opportunity to see it, you won't believe the difference. It looks like we removed the roofs off those areas. It's so much brighter and it looks like natural light. We also sent two people to learn to polish concrete in preparation for our summer projects. And of course, it's spring. The grass started to grow. We are, my grounds crew is super busy right now in preparation, trying to, trying to keep ahead of it, especially with all the, the spring sports. We want everything to look tip top for the district. And that's all I have for facilities.
Thank you very much. And we'll be at Talent Middle School at our next meeting so we can all look at the improvement and we all, I'm sure we all look forward to seeing that. So thank you very much. Next up, any questions for John before I move on? Okay. Next up is financial update.
Yeah, we'll get, typically we do the financial report, the second meeting, but I just want to highlight a few things in the importance of that house bill that was presented and unanimously passed. We received word from ODE, just includes this year. So back funded to the beginning of the year, just that dollar amount was over $2.5 million for us this year. Next year, it's looking like it's a $4.5 million backfill. So that just shows the impact of the fire and students that have been displaced. So and that's just the first, first two years of that. The reason why it's so important is we also got our federal allocation estimates that are down, that federal government has been kind for the S R money and things of that nature. But when we lose students and ADM in that manner affects all our federal budgets, the title budgets, title one is a large budget, almost $2 million to us. That's a 14% decrease next year based on the formulas, which is direct impact from the fires. And that was a $2 billion increase from total budget anyway, from the Fed. IDEA, some other title funding did not get that increase. So we're expecting about a 20% decrease in those funds. So with some extra funding and utilizing our S R funds, it's going to be vital to backfill some of those services. What it does is you can put $2.5 million additional $4.5 million, put that to staff and programs. That's, that's a huge, huge, huge impact. So again, thank you, but I just wanted to kind of make sure people understood that. Last year, we budgeted $1 million for PERS liability. As you know, a few years back, the legislature did a PERS incentive that we, that we were on the ground floor. We took advantage of that purse. And I think it was up to 25% matching grant to help for PERS liability down the road. We were hoping that that would be again, coming down the pike, but that program was so popular that the funding that was happening now, there's 42 districts on the waitlist that they're hoping to fund for that. So that's not in an incentive program, but it is in special revenue fund that we can discuss what we want to do with that come budget season next, next month. But extremely, I believe it's continued to be wise to look at our PERS liability in the future because it will, it will have an impact on our overall budget. That's all I have for the financial update on my end.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Brent?
Not really a question, but a statement because I happen to have the benefit of being in the same meeting with Brent when we got the news about, or in a meeting when near when they got the news about the federal change in, in those dollars. And there's not a program or a way to you know, to have a similar, like what we got from the state, there's not really a way to do that. I mean, we could invite Wyden and Merkley here and give them a manzanita and see if that helps. But, but there's just not a, there's not really a way to do that. So just, just in case that was a question in your mind, that was definitely a question of mine and there's not really a way to do that. So that's where we have to supplement with those extra, with those additional or supplemental funds to make sure that we can retain those services. So.
That sounds good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you come to every meeting? Send you the Zoom link. Senator Golden Nancy said that's been a successful program. There'll be more funding. Which program?
It's a person sent to program and it really has helped district and actually cities also and other public entities have an opportunity to do that. We were, this board was very smart in making that decision when we did because 42 on the waitlist. We got in quick. So that was, that was a good move and that's going to pay off dividends. Already changed our PERS rates currently. And the more we can do that, the more we can have our monies spent on programs and people.
I think the PERS issue is going to be important one for the community to, you know, give some 101 on that, how that, you know, you know, just a bottom line of how we got in the mess that we got into as a, as a really, it's nationwide, but as a state and then, you know, things, what it means if we don't address it, the whole cliff and everything. It's an important thing to remind the community of what that means and why it's important to plan ahead for those things.
Absolutely. And I do think you can do some comparables and you can see, we were fortunate to have some funds to be able to put into that. Some other districts or municipalities were not. Right. And you can compare to see the impact and, and it's, yeah, and it's scary. It's a, it's a liability that is always on our mind.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very important information. Moving on to legislation and OSBA update. Sarah, do you want me to go first? Do you want to go first? So first off, you should have gotten an email from Denise about the summer board conference, which is July 8th through the 10th with pre-conference, I believe is on the 7th. If you haven't already, let Denise know that you're going, please do so. For those that have not gone before, the information is so valuable. I can't even say how valuable it is. And OSBA recognizes that communication with each, with other school boards is, is very vital in this and it's been lacking. I know for me, my, myself not being able to talk to other school board members about their challenges and how they've overcome them is really, is really missing. So I'm really excited about that. And they had a theme and I did not write the thing down, but I think it's about engaging community. I think that's the big theme of the conference. Pace Days is coming April 14th. They are in Salem or virtual. I looked through, of course, I'm on the pace board. I looked through their workshops they have. They are, they look like they're very informative. Last year I was impressed by how much I learned about insurance and they had lawyers on talking about policies that we've passed and the importance and how they end up in court. And it's very interesting to me to hear it kind of, you know, filter down and then filter through the systems. And they talked about a lot of that.
Which seems to have slowed the traffic down quite a bit. We did a new HVAC unit on the cafeteria at Talent Elementary. And we finished, actually today, we finished the last of it. An LED lighting upgrade to TMS to add light in the common areas. From day one, when I got here, I met with Aaron when he was principal there and he expressed how dark it was there. And but trying to find a good solution has been difficult. And when Kent took over, Kentley, so we had the same meeting. And I was able to come up with a good solution. I think if you get the opportunity or when you get the opportunity to see it, you won't believe the difference. It looks like we removed the roofs off those areas. It's so much brighter and it looks like natural light. We also sent two people to learn to polish concrete. In preparation for our summer projects. And of course, it's spring. The grass started to grow. We are, my grounds crew is super busy right now in preparation, trying to, trying to keep ahead of it, especially with all the, the spring sports. We want everything to look tip top for the district. And that's all I have for facilities.
Thank you very much. And we'll be at Talent Middle School at our next meeting, so we can all look at the improvement and we all, I'm sure we all look forward to seeing that. So thank you very much. Next up, any questions for John before I move on? Okay, next up is financial update.
Yeah, we'll get, typically we do the financial report, the second meeting, but I just want to highlight a few things in the importance of that house bill that was presented and unanimously passed. We received word from ODE, just includes this year, so backfunded to the beginning of the year, just that dollar amount was over $2.5 million for us this year. Next year, it's looking like it's a $4.5 million backfill. So that just shows the impact of the fire and students that have been displaced. So and that's just the first, first two years of that. The reason why it's so important is we also got our federal allocation estimates that are down, that federal government has, has been kind for the S R money and things of that nature. But when we lose students and ADM in that manner affects all our federal budgets, the title budgets, title one is a large budget, almost $2 million to us. That's a 14% decrease next year based on the formulas, which is direct impact from the fires. And that was a $2 billion increase from total budget anyway from the Fed. IDEA, some other title funding did not get that increase. So we're expecting about a 20% decrease in those funds. So with some extra funding and utilizing our S R funds, it's going to be vital to backfill some of those services. What it does is you can put $2.5 million, additional $4.5 million. Put that to staff and programs. That's, that's a huge, huge, huge impact. So again, thank you, but I just wanted to kind of make sure people understood that. Last year, we budgeted $1 million for PERS liability. As you know, a few years back, the legislature did a PERS incentive that we, that we were on the ground floor. We took advantage of that. PERS, and I think it was up to 25% matching grant to help for PERS liability down the road. We were hoping that that would be, again, coming down the pike, but that program was so popular that the funding that was happening now, there's 42 districts on the waitlist that they're hoping to fund for that. So that's not in an incentive program, but it is in special revenue fund that we can discuss what we want to do with that come budget season next, next month. But extremely, I believe it's continued to be wise to look at our PERS liability in the future because it will, it will have an impact on our overall budget. That's all I have for the financial update on my end.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Brent?
Not really a question, but a statement because I happen to have the benefit of being in the same meeting with Brent when we got the news about or in a meeting when, near when they got the news about the federal change in, in those dollars. And there's not a program or a way to you know, to have a similar, like what we got from the state, there's not really a way to do that. I mean, we could invite Wyden and Merkley here and give them a manzanita and see if that helps. But, but there's just not a, there's not really a way to do that. So just, just in case that was a question in your mind, that was definitely a question of mine and there's not really a way to do that. So that's where we have to supplement with those extra, with those additional or supplemental funds to make sure that we can retain those services. So.
That sounds good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you come to every meeting? Send you the Zoom link. Senator Golden Nancy said that's been a successful program. There'll be more funding. Which program?
It's a PERS incentive program and it really has helped district and actually cities also and other public entities have an opportunity to do that. We were, this board was very smart in making that decision when we did because 42 on the waitlist. We got in quick. So that was, that was a good move and that's going to pay off dividends. Already changed our PERS rates currently. And the more we can do that, the more we can have our monies spent on programs and people.
I think the PERS issue is going to be important one for the community to, you know, give some 101 on that. How that, you know, you know, just a bottom line of how we got in the mess that we got into as a, as a really, it's nationwide, but as a state and then you know, things, what it means if we don't address it, the whole cliff and everything. It's an important thing to remind the community of what that means and why it's important to plan ahead for those things.
Absolutely. And, and I do think you can do some comparables and you can see we were fortunate to have some funds to be able to put into that. Some other districts or municipalities were not. And you can compare to see the impact and, and it's yeah, and it's scary. It's, it's a liability that is always on our mind.
Okay, thank you very much. Very important information. I'm moving on to legislation and OSBA update. Sarah, do you want me to go first? Do you want to go first? So first off, you should have gotten an email from Denise about the summer board conference, which is July 8th through the 10th. With pre-conference, I believe is on the 7th. If you haven't already, let Denise know that you're going, please do so. For those that have not gone before, the information is so valuable. I can't even say how valuable it is. And OSBA recognizes that communication with each, with other school boards is, is very vital in this and it's been lacking. I know for me, my myself, not being able to talk to other school board members about their challenges and how they've overcome them is really, is really missing. So I'm really excited about that. And they had a theme and I did not write the thing down, but I think it's about engaging community. I think that's the big theme of the conference. Pace Days is coming April 14th. They are in Salem or virtual. I looked through, of course, I'm on the pace board. I looked through their workshops they have. They are, they look like they're very informative. Last year I was impressed by how much I learned about insurance and they had lawyers on talking about policies that we've passed and the importance and how they end up in court. And it's very interesting to me to hear it kind of, you know, filter down and then filter through the systems. And they talked about a lot of that hate speech and, and students wearing T-shirts and all of that. It was very valuable information. So I would say it's free. I think it's too late to do the in-person. Today was the cutoff, but if you really want to do in-person, you could probably ask. But the online virtual, you can still sign up, I think, for a couple more days. So there's that. There's a group of, I don't really know how to say it, board chairs and boards, but also some other people involved. And they sent emails throughout and the one that's been going out the last couple of days is on fentanyl poisoning. There's a problem. I know we're having a problem with vape pens. And then the vape pens are getting laced with fentanyl and it's causing some serious issues for students. So a lot of, one, I think it's Wes Lynn, I can't remember. They have come up with a policy and they were going to share their policy. It just came, that just came today. So I just wanted to bring that to attention to us that it might be something that we look at. I know it's something, drugs and vaping and those issues are something that I have on my list to talk about at LPC. I know that it's from the pandemic. It's been, there's been a lot of challenges. And so I think that's something. So in this group, I'll keep you guys updated. It's board chairs and vice chairs. I don't know if Michael still gets the emails, but I thought it was very important that this was a concern that popped up this week from several across the state. So I wanted you guys to be aware of that.
And what it is, what, what they're trying to do is they're trying to, they, they passed a policy, right, to supply the I'm not going to pronounce it right, the lock zone. It's the, so in the event that there is a fentanyl overdose happening on a campus, we, they passed a policy where they could, oh, it's Narcan.
Yeah.
Yeah. They can, it's a nasal spray that reverses the overdose effect. So they passed a policy where they're going to keep, have it in every school, I think, in West Lynn, something like that. Yeah.
I believe so. I like, I just got the email today and I did, I think she just sent out the policy today, but I just wanted to bring it.
Yeah. It's, there's, there is, you know, for as challenging as the last couple of years have been, that's one thing I've appreciated is the collaboration across the state on issues that we're all facing. So.
No, please, please do. I, I welcome it and I think it's important. The last thing I have on the list is that oh, couple, actually a couple of things. OSBA, there was some talk about NSBA, the National School Board Associations. Some of the states are leaving and they're starting a consort, a new consortium. I don't remember the name of the consortium. I apologize. But I can get it for you. The OSBA board talked, looked at the consortium, talked to OSBA and asked if they wanted to be a founding partner. The way it's set up now is, it's not based, your fee is not based on your percentage of students. It's based on how much money you have in your account. So Oregon is doing well and so they have, so for OSBA, they pay a higher fund than some of the other states. And so this new consortium wanted to do the same thing. So there was, there was a couple, there was a lot of talk. It came down to the mission statement and goals of the new consortium, consortium didn't seem to align with OSBA's. One of the things was kids was not mentioned in the mission statement. And so a lot of the OSBA that was a big concern, like ki- kids were not mentioned in that, but they may have changed it. But when they voted for this, I was not all transparency, I was not, it was like a quick half an hour meeting on Zoom and I did not make it, but and the conversations before, that was a huge concern of OSBA. So I just wanted to know, they could still move to the new consortium. But at this time, they have chose to stay with NSBA. Last, OSBA is exploring a rural caucus and is starting and starting with a rural schools advisory committee to talk about this. It's similar to what the color caucus was. A lot of the schools in the rural areas, Southern Oregon and Eastern Oregon feel like sometimes OSBA does not represent them and their voice is not being heard. I was asked to join the rural schools advisory committee to start this process and I have accepted. I have been told I will learn more. At, we will have LPC and OSBA meetings at the end of the month. And Scott Rogers, the president of OSBA invited me to, or asked if I would join. And I said yes, and he said he would give me more information in April. So I really don't know what it means. I just said yes, because I felt like it would be helpful to our region and our district. Any other, any questions for me or any, Sarah, do you want to add anything?
Just the LPC is going to have their meeting in April, 22nd and 23rd up in Eugene. And it's really going to start looking at what the priorities will be for the next legislative long session. And so having conversations about that and we have homework. And I apologize that I have been absorbing information, but not sharing information. So I, I strive to do better in that arena. Until Dawn, I'm sending an email this week. I'm going to send it to you to look at. So I apologize that I've dropped the ball on that. And I, I want to show our board and the other boards in our region. Because this is the framework that will formulate the policy. Legislative policy, what is it? It's the priorities. And so this, the, the answers to some of these questions will be what formulates the priorities that our lobbyists go to the legislature for. So we really need to, this is the opportunity for us to have our input in that, so that our voice is, our region's voice is represented. So I will get an email out very soon because to give you guys an opportunity to provide some input. So when we meet together, I have some more than just my thoughts.
And it's a, it's a long process, several months long. And I asked about the homework section of like, how much information am I supposed to bring at this first meeting? And they said this first meeting, our homework session, our homework was to go to town halls of representatives, which we both did, yay for us. And then attend the meeting and they would go over more on how they wanted us to bring information back. I know that they give the sheets, but they're going to go over at the meeting because I'm like, how much am I supposed to bring? And they said I was doing just fine. So I'm assuming you are doing just fine too. And, but after we get back in May, I'm sure we'll hit the ground running and start asking for a lot of input. But in between, please think of things that you think should be a priority for OSBA and please feel free to share it with us.
I want to say that I'm grateful that you're both drinking from the fire hose and you're doing it very gracefully.
I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Nancy, if, if you, if I forget you, please. Chat, I'm, I'm trying to look and make sure that I'm not forgetting you. So is there?
No, you're doing great, Dawn. Thank you.
Next is the Almeda Fire Update. Brent?
I think I'll pass it to Polly who made it to those meetings. So thank you. I will just say, I am so happy that our board is engaged and and kind of on the front lines of, that's not typical on a lot of school boards. And we have tremendous voice and get information quicker than maybe most boards. So thank you for all your work. And Polly sits on these meetings every week as well.
They're now once a month and it is really enlightening to go to them. So I'm going to share some numbers and then I'm going to email Denise those numbers. Because when I'm in these meetings, I can barely get them down in the time. And people also ask again for them to be repeated because there's so many. ODHS makes a report at these meetings and this is speaking to the hotel rooms that are still being occupied. There's 153 rooms and 238 survivors still in those hotel rooms. It's kind of really sobering numbers, really. Southern Oregon RV had 22 families moved out and two are left who are now in the process of, they are in the process of finding another arrangement. Also, the disaster case managers that are assigned to these groups of people that are in these, all these different locations are all maxed out. They have had to hire several more and they are all maxed out on their caseloads to help these people. There is, I hope I'm saying the Loring, the Roxy and the Merrick are using our, are used for emergency only housing currently. And then the Jackson opened up and I want to say in the prior meeting, there were 17 rooms occupied. Now there are 38 rooms occupied. And that is where a hotel has been converted to a longer situation. I don't remember exactly where the Jackson is. I think it's the right downtown where the Red Lion used to be. Also, they have ongoing outreach meetings, ODHS and other community partners. And talent, they met in talent and they were able to capture 10 more families that had not been reached out to previously. So now they're offering services to those families. So that just shows you that we still have a long way to go. That's 10 more people who hadn't received services or needed help and didn't know how to get that. And that was taking place within our gateway area, that meeting. I had, I asked Brent to help me with this, but there was a block grant with a lot of million dollar and, and funding for housing. And this is coming and I'm really excited to see this. They have a survey of all of the people who were affected in the fires and a survey taking into account what their needs are. So I'm going to try to share out that information. Also, the Jackson County Recovery, this is from a different meeting, Jackson County Recovery Group also conducted a survey that's available. And they have a lot of information about, they did in-depth interviews with families who are fire affected. And those interviews could be up to two hours in length or something. So it's really extensive what the information is they're giving in that report as well. You see a lot of modular units that are down here on Highway 99. Those are going into Royal Oaks and they're doing the application process through Oregon Housing Commission. And that's, I don't know if some of you knew that there was a gentleman. I don't know how, what the number was, but there's a lot of them. Also, I thought this is kind of a cool data piece that the, I don't know if you've seen information about this, the fire hardening grants where they're encouraging people to landscape their homes or giving money to landscape homes. So they're more apt to do better in a fire situation. And in Phoenix alone had, oh no. Phoenix had the most applicants and there were a total of 155 applications in Phoenix Town in the fire affected area. So that was pretty cool. Also, I heard also by one of the talent city council members. She mentioned that there is going to now be a talent chamber of commerce, which there was at one time, but there hasn't been. It's called the Talent Business Alliance. And they're having a meeting on April 21st, their first one. So they'll start with that. That's my spiel.
Thank you so much for attending those and taking diligent notes because ever since they changed the meetings, I've been unable to attend most of them. So I appreciate you.
Did you find out anything about the FEMA? How much?
Yeah, they talk about that every time, but there's never any, they're talking about the rents, they're being collected. There's not a lot of data ever given at that meeting. And, and honestly, there isn't really anyone at that table to, there's one person from FEMA, but they're all phasing out. So there really isn't that much data that's available at that particular meeting. So it might be a long-term recovery group question.
Anything else before I move on? Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Group. I'm not sure who wants to speak first on that. We see Nancy come on. Nancy, would you like to?
Sure, I'm happy to share. And I'm just jumping in because and I'll invite Brent or anyone else to chime in. So the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee met this week. Yeah. Oh my goodness, there's so many, there's too many meetings that I'm attending that now I'm losing track of when I'm going where. But we, there was a really rich discussion around group agreements and how this space might feel for folks that are coming in to participate. So I appreciate the fact that there's a particular call out to really stay engaged, speak truth, experience discomfort and expect and accept non-closure. When, when we have conversations around equity, diversity and inclusion, they can be really difficult. They can be difficult for a number of reasons. I think we oftentimes associate certain behaviors with good or bad. And, and, and we make mistakes. We're human. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that, that while we do make mistakes, it doesn't necessarily make us like a bad person. So we're hoping that in these spaces, we can have uncomfortable conversations that we are able to create a safe space to have those uncomfortable conversations. And that's exactly what happened in this last month's meeting. And, and from that is it's having a space to have conversations around how can we make our community, our school community more more welcoming, more belonging to people that might look different than us, right? So in this conversation, we discussed some issues. We, we had conversations. We talked about things that we can continue to do better. And I'm bringing that up simply because I also think that part of conversations around equity, diversity and inclusion really require that cultural humility, right? Acknowledging when, when we, we could do something better. That's really important. We're not immune to making mistakes. And that's a great thing because we have a really wonderful group of gracious individuals that, that really want to, or strive and are committed to making this space more equitable, more inclusive, more diverse and more welcoming and safe. Also, because it does require a, it requires more attention. We're hoping that there's really, and I'm glad that we have been having a lot of conversations around the budget meetings. But we're hoping to have a specific line item for equity, diversity and inclusion efforts. And that may be that this, that this line, budget line item really supports professional development, that it helps bring us to a place where we can be more aware. None of us are born knowing everything. This is a learning process for all of us. So I'm always encouraged that, that there's people that are really committed to growing and learning and doing things better when, when we can. Or as we can, because we all can. So our, the discussion really was around having a space to talk about difficult conversations, but also not just be, not having us, not only having a space to have difficult conversations, but also what are we actually doing to improve the environment in which we're in? And that's why it's so valuable to have specific funding set aside for this particular effort and commitment. One of the things that I've appreciated about OSBA has been this continuous conversation that it isn't a priority unless it's on a budget. And I'm now beginning to understand what that actually means. So there's a lot of wonderful work happening. I'm grateful for the folks. I mentioned at the beginning that I, I really wanted to thank the communications department for acknowledging, you know, our diverse population and just reaching out in such a lovely and beautiful way to say, hey, these things might be happening because we're in a season of Ramadan. Let's be supportive to our youth. Let's be supportive to our families in a way that it's not shameful, but it's really caring. And, and again, it's just raising that awareness. I don't know if there's anything else that I am missing. Again, there was a I don't know if there's anything else that I am missing. Again, there was a lot of really great conversations. Um, oh, there was something else that somebody was asking if there was uh curriculum or information, and maybe this is, this can be brought up to OSBA around um EDI for K through twelve students, right? How do we, how do we not only just learn more information, but how do we share that information with our kiddos and families? And I don't know of any for that particular age group. But if any of you know, it'd be really helpful to know, to get that information. Um, and I'm not sure if there is such a thing, but I love that um this group is really hoping to to really grow and continue to have this space just continuously evolve and improve.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I echo. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, I echo your thoughts. You recapped that very well. Actually, that meeting was yesterday. I know it feels like it was a long time ago. It was uh yesterday. But you just recapped it so well and thank you. And and um I am as excited as you are about the the possibilities and in really creating that space. I think some of the conversations, I don't think in the past we've, we would be able to have in that setting and and we um, you know, started with some norms and I look forward to sharing the norms with the uh board members. I thought they were uh really enlightening and specific and um easy to understand and and it was a, a good way to start. So thank you. Um, I will, we have had two primary goals for the um, and we are gonna start calling it EDI with equity at the forefront, equity, diversity and inclusion. Um, so thank you, Nancy, for that. About the inclusion uh book and the study, and I know some people were involved in that. So we had around fifty staff members uh that participated that, which was amazing. And they'll uh share out um, you know, with that group as well. Also, DL Richardson who is meeting with our secondary schools to really provide tools and space to uh help support staff in addressing in the moment inequities or bias incidents and and um I think he, he starts uh with the high school next week and then he goes to the middle school later in the month. So I'm excited about that. So, thank you.
I just wanna.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Brett, for reminding me that it was just yesterday. That is so funny. The other thing, um, and another letter, an additional letter that I have been hearing in the EDI world is um the addition, additional letter, the B. And B stands for belonging. And I'm like, oh, my goodness, I love that. I need to bring that up. And of course, I didn't bring it up yesterday, but there you go. You are the first to hear that I think that um it'd be wise of us to include that because I know that Phoenix Town School District has done truly a tremendous job to ensure that youth feel like they belong. Um, you know, the, the recent challenges that have happened. It has really exponentially, or actually has really helped us demonstrate what that looks like in action, not just a word. So I love to incorporate that additional letter into this space.
So I think we've arrived at an interesting time in our society when the word equity triggers people. Um, and I think it's important that we continue to talk about what it means to be an equitable place for students and adults. And it's not about curriculum. It's not about making people feel bad about themselves. What it's about, and I think the Ramadan example is a really good example of what it means to be focused on equity, right? It's building awareness so that people feel safe and heard and like they belong, right? So Equity, Diversity and Inclusion is sending out a message saying, hey, it's Ramadan. We have students participating in that, just so you know, and here's how they might be showing up to school differently than is typical, so that we can be supportive of them, right? That's what it means to be equitable. And so I think um this has been an interesting conversation in our community. It's been an interesting conversation nationwide. And we need to continue having the conversation so we can be really clear about what equity efforts are and what they aren't. Um, and so Nancy, I really appreciate your preface at the beginning of what you talked about is walking away from a, a conversation, being okay that there's not necessarily a resolution in that moment. But we have to continue having the conversation because these kiddos who are participating in Ramadan and showing up maybe a little malnourished, not in the best shape to learn, deserve for us to know that that's going on so that we can support them, right? So anyway, I, I, I just wanted to um thank you for your efforts and for um, the way that you shared the information because I think it's really important. And I think we'll continue to have this conversation about a, as a community about what it, what it is and what it isn't.
Thank you, Michael, for framing that so beautifully because you're absolutely right. Um, these words have unfortunately become somewhat of naughty words and some people and some people um like experience, right? And and it's and the hope is that it's, it's not that. It is really, how do we at the core of who we are, regardless of who we are, because we all show up with such beautiful strengths, right? At the core of who we are, how are we treating, acknowledging people with dignity? We might have a difference of opinions. We might walk this world a little bit different and that's okay. It's just how do we continue to, to really um embrace our kiddos, our families, our staff? Because it's not, you know, it's not a separate entity. It's everything. It's so interrelated. How do we continue to show up in a way that really honors people's humanity, which is, you know, you, you mentioned it so beautifully and, and we are all learning in this space, which is why I appreciated, especially appreciated the fact that I don't have to have all the answers, right? You all can input, bring and share ideas and frame it in a way that it, that can be understood by other people. So this is always a working process and and I think it also does require that humility to acknowledge when, oh, my goodness, we, we can do better. How do we want to do better? Because it's not about shame. It's really about growth.
Thank you both. That's just a great words and I appreciate the conversation. Um, anything anyone wants to add before I move on? Um, next is Board Policy Rewrite Section ENF. Um, Denise sent out a new thing today. Thank you so, so much um for that. And um I'll open it up for discussion unless Brett, do you want to start us off with anything?
No, I just want to thank Denise and uh other staff members for really um looking into some of these uh questions that we had and you know, for the most part, just in general, I think we have that in the recommendations. But if it's a policy that we don't currently have um and is not highly recommended or required and it does not fit us at this time, uh, staff would recommend that we just pass on it at this time, so.
I was just gonna make a quick little um cheat sheet or understanding and I, I apologize, I was gonna do this before the meeting of which ones on the optionals that um we just wouldn't be including maybe in next month's, because I said agenda?
We would have to go through them. Um, there's a, as you go through that red language, uh, for example, E E A C E, a new policy that does not need to be adopted. Yeah, do you want to, do you know the ones that you have that are optional that won't be included next time? That was one that had the three versions and we, we do not bill Medicaid and we do, we're not self-insured. So it's not.
My question was, there was a lot of, there were a lot of choices in, in the um, there were a lot of policies that had choices that didn't appear that we had made a choice yet. So does this document that we received this afternoon go through and address each one of those policies where there was, we can either choose this bracket or that bracket for language. That's, that's what that is. Okay, great. Um, that's great. Um, thank you for doing that. And yeah, they're uh reading through, there were definitely policies. I was like, I'm not sure this is relevant to us. So um, I definitely appreciate the effort to, to do that. I did just have one thing. Let me find it.
As you find that too, is when we send the uh next document, when it says new policy to us, we'll also put the what category is it like required or hi- highly recommended or optional? Um, so, so on what Denise sends out that um, which will um clarify, so.
Thank you for doing that because that was one of my questions and probably Sarah's too. Well, do we need this?
Okay, so ECAA. Sorry, I'm trying to bounce back and forth here. Is that one of the policies? ECAA. It's not on this list, probably because there.
Oh, access to building?
Yes. It's not on the cheat sheet, probably because there wasn't anything to choose from. I just, it was just grammar. I, I didn't know if, when we say district buildings as is appropriate, I don't think we need both of those. I think we can just say as appropriate and then staff and students. Okay, now I understand. I had a question mark here, but I understand. So it was just, I was just gonna recommend removing an is, that's all. Uh, ECAA. Access to district buildings as nest, as appropriate and necessary. I didn't think we needed is. I'm just channeling my inner um Lori. Just keeping her spirit with us. That was it. Hundred and seventy-two pages. That was my only thing. Move one is. And then just questions about which language are we recommending of all the choices there? So.
And I think as second, Denise, I think this was a um, you know, these words, E was a big section uh with a lot of you know, transportation and IPM and stuff like that. So thanks for taking the time to read through those and thanks for sending those questions.
Any other questions or comments? Rick, did you have any questions?
Not at this time.
And Sarah, you didn't?
I have my question. My questions were answered in the um, in the Word doc and I think uh Brett answered them and Denise shared it with everyone. So those were just that one IPM uh question for John, maybe if, if it's gonna be included. Are we gonna keep it in policy or?
Yeah, so that was, that was a good question. Uh, um, that was when, a couple of years ago, when we adopted that policy, it will be an IPM as well. We feel like it can live in both documents. And that'll be the practice. When we get a bo- uh, um, board question on a policy, we'll try to uh have that policy answered to staff and send it out to everybody just so um, everybody knows.
I, I did have something and it was in line with what Michael was talking about. I saw the, the term business manager throughout and a few of those, but we don't have that kept at we call that position something else, right?
Yeah, Director of Finance right now. Um, and, and we can look at that when we recommend business manager on that, we can change that language to Director of Finance. Good catch, thanks.
Control F. Find, replace.
Nancy, did you have any um comments or questions?
I don't, but thank you for asking.
Rebecca, do you have anything? I just want to thank um staff and Denise for answering my questions. I gave them a lot this time. I normally don't. And um they answered them quite quickly and I did it like the neck of time where it was probably not the best time to send it. But I appreciate you guys um all um scrambling to answer my questions. And I learned a lot from your answers. Hearing nothing else. Sorry, I'm trying to be more mindful of the mic and look at my papers. I'm not a very great multitasker when I'm supposed to be speaking in a certain direction. Um, next is review of the next agenda. A reminder that um the next meeting will be at the middle school in the morning, ten AM is the morning. Um, and Brent, it will not be here, correct?
Um, I will be out of town, so Tiffany will be filling in for me. Uh, thank you, Tiffany. She did so well last time. And we will be at the middle school. The middle school's excited to host us. Um, and it'll be a similar format where um kids will be in front of the board, which is always a fun time.
I got two different invites for that. I got an evening invite and a morning invite. So it's just, we just have the one meeting in the morning, correct? And I am, okay, great. I'll be there.
And is also going to be virtual. So if you need to um not be able to be present because you have work that you're trying to juggle, that is um also an option. But it's one of my favorite meetings when we have the students um in there. And then the draft is in your blue folder. At this time, there's no action items listed, but um you never know what's gonna happen.
We may have a um something to do with real estate as we've talked about with coal mine, so.
Yeah. So any um questions or comments about the next agenda, Sarah?
Um, I just wanted, I thought of it tonight, the um, we talked about potentially doing student representative of voting in the spring for the fall. And so it may be a good opportunity before we start to really lose them and see to get some feedback from them about ways that we could potentially improve um their experience and um maybe suggestions for how to recruit different ones. So I just don't want us to lose that um, that connection with them.
Would you like, I mean, uh, kinda like listening sessions, what we did, what, what well, you know, what, what you struggle with and what, what suggestions for improvement? And we can, we could certainly prompt that and then uh they could share sometime, but we, we can talk about that when we want to do that. So we can get that to them. That's a good question. That's a good idea.
And I'm not sure the student reps will be at our meeting on that day because it's in the middle of school and it just seems not practical. Yeah.
No, maybe not. I just didn't want to have us lose it, right?
I put it on the list.
Good, thank you.
So, anything else that um?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I, during that next meeting, I'll be traveling with the speech and debate crew to go to state for um their competition up there. So I won't be here for that.
Amazing.
Well, I'm very excited after two years. I'm finally going back.
We will miss you, but um that is a great reason um and event to be missed. So um, yes. Anything else? Okay, thank you all online and thank you all here for a great meeting again and have a nice evening.
Adios.